The meeting is called to order for the regular city council meeting on March 17th, 2016. The pledge, Madam Clerk?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What's your call? Councilman Bodie?
Present.
Councilman Benton?
Present.
Councilman Hewitt?
Present.
Councilman Johnson?
Present.
Councilman Wheeler?
Present.
Mayor Misselli?
Present.
Police Chief Walker?
Here.
Fire Chief St. Seer?
Present.
And City Attorney Bures.
Present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to give a little update at what's going on at Harahan Sewer Plant. One of the affluent pumps that was refurbished is back in action and working at a much higher capacity than we've had from one of those pumps prior. Every few weeks, we will be doing the next pump and moving forward. We are hoping to look at the total funding to see if we, at the end of the project, if there's enough funding, we will do an additional pump to help with the functioning at the sewer plant. So, we're progressing nicely. I wanted to tell the public that the 2016 budget will be up for adoption on March 31st at a special meeting at 6:00 PM. This is a special meeting. It will be televised. We will be putting the budget on the website for everyone to see. At the last city council meeting, the special meeting last week, I read the budget message in its entirety, but I'd like to take this opportunity to share with you the condensed version of the budget message. Prior to taking office in January 2015, Harahan was operating with an ever-growing deficit. That deficit, as of December 31st, 2014, represented approximately nearly one-third of the city's revenue. This projected a poor fiscal outlook because it impacted our ability to borrow, refinance debt, attract businesses, protect property values, and provide essential services to our citizens and businesses. As of December 2015, that deficit is approximately one-twelfth of the city's revenue and reflects an improving but still tenuous financial situation. As mandated by the Louisiana's Local Government Budget Act, we must institute a long-range plan to decrease and eventually remove the deficit. Additionally, should we increase our already-existing deficit, that would be in clear violation of the law. Thus, keeping this in mind, as well as Harahan's current cash flow needs and estimated future economic conditions, we have used a conservative approach to compile the 2016 fiscal year budget. Our desire is to continue reducing the deficit, decrease expenditures when appropriate, and seek additional revenues. Upon taking office in January 1st, 2015, the general fund had a deficit of approximately $1.2 million. Early indicators from 2015 of actual operations show this deficit being decreased by approximately That represents 71 percent reduction in 12 months. This was done by pursuing delinquent taxes, completing requirements to receive grant money dating back to 2012, and pursuing FEMA reimbursement dating back to Hurricane Katrina. Additionally, a BP payment of approximately $450,000 was received. This money that was received as a result of that lawsuit represents 53 percent of the decreased deficit in the year 2015. Maximizing our revenues and minimizing expenses resulted in the remaining deficit reductions. This included rebidding the health insurance, which resulted in an average monthly savings of approximately $12,000 per month while maintaining a comprehensive coverage. By the end of 2016, a conservative estimate predicts that the 2014 deficit will be reduced by a total of $1 million, nearly 90 percent in just two years. The Louisiana Legislative Auditor's report also stated that Harahan had failed to collect approximately $163,000 in delinquent property tax and interest during the period of 1993 through December 31st, 2014. $115,000 of that $163,000 was uncollected from 2008 to 2014. From September 30th, when the report from the Legislative Auditor was published, September 30th, 2015, through December 31st, 2015, in just three months, we collected approximately $91,000 of that outstanding amount. We are currently now up to $106,000 collected in past delinquent taxes. We are pursuing the remaining back taxes owed to the city, and we are planning to proceed with Harahan's first-ever tax sale. This year, we will continue to scrutinize contracts to ensure that all services are being utilized to their fullest. Requests for proposals and competitive bid process will be utilized for expiring contracts. Currently, we are investigating refinancing our existing bond to a lower interest rate. Our new lower interest, our new lower deficit increases Harahan's leverage in securing that new lower interest rate. Our goal is to continually operate the city within its means, ultimately removing the deficit entirely. Thus far, we have met this goal, and I'm proud to tell our citizens that we are going to be successful. I would like to extend, I'd like to express my deep, deep appreciation to my administrative staff, all city employees, and volunteers for their continued hard work and dedication in making Harahan the best place to live, work, worship, and play. I'd also like to address, we had Mr. Tommy Buddy come up during Address the Council. He asked a very astute question. He wanted to know how much that we collected was one-time revenue and as opposed to recurring revenue. Ms. Linda Lulu has put together a chart for me. The BP settlement is one-time, $453,000. FEMA is $51,000. Grants to the police, $7,500. Jefferson Parish Council, $6,000. Delinquent property taxes, $91,000. That's a total of $608,000. So, the total, then when you're looking at capital projects, et cetera, the total savings was a reduction of $861,000 total. So, if you combine those one-time revenues and subtract the two, there's a difference of $251,000, $252,000 if you round it. That was achieved by rebidding our health insurance and also by belt tightening and doing more with less and working a lot of hard, long, strenuous hours. Our staff is really to be commended. They've done a great job. Special presentations, we don't have any special presentations tonight.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda in order to add an ordinance for first reading, to amend ordinance 1333 to strengthen the NU bachelors only.
There's a motion to amend the agenda to add an ordinance to amend 1333. Where is it? Right here. So, do I have a second for that motion?
I'll just get it now.
Right. So, there's a motion to amend the agenda to add this for first reading, this ordinance. Do I have a second? Do I have a second, Ms. Wheeler? I'm going to ask each council?
Considering I just got it.
Right, this is customary. It's an ordinance to amend the agenda. Ms. Benton? I will say that. Ms. Hewitt? Do you have a second? Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Bodie? We can't get a second to even have a vote whether we want to amend the agenda so that we can improve the conditions in the bachelor. So, the motion dies for lack of a second. We will now do Address the Council. We will open this up to public discussion. Anyone who would like to address the council, please step up to the podium, and when you step up to the podium, please state your name, your address. Please remember that you have three minutes to address the council. Please avoid any inflammatory comments. I'm also going to ask, we have in the past afforded a lot of latitude, and people have popped up from seated positions to talk to the council or someone who's speaking. We are not going to entertain that tonight. If you want to speak, you must do so while you're doing Address the Council. Ms. Wheeler?
My name is John Reed, Lieutenant Lieutenant. We believe the activity on the sand bachelor is a very important issue affecting Harahan residents.
Thank you.
We had a meeting with Pierce Wood on December 8th, 2015, at Harahan City Hall, showing Mr. Wood, his company on Google Map, and pictures of sand affecting community. We informed him of the residents' request. The sand and fly problem have been on WGNO, in the Times-Picayune, and in the New Orleans Advocate several times. Pierce Wood, Wood Materials, and his attorney were at the council meeting, January 21st, 2016, when we addressed the mayor and the city council. Mr. Wood declined the opportunity to speak on camera to WGNO. We stayed after the council meeting on January 21st to talk with Pierce Wood and his attorney. We again stated the residents' request to him. The New Orleans Advocate reporter, Chad Calder,'s comment on March 7th, 2016, in the newspaper quoted, "Company owner Pierce Wood declined to comment on the complaints." Attorney for Pierce Wood pled not guilty at Harahan Court, March 8th, 2016, for composting and mulching. New court date was given for May 10th, 2016, but business continues on the bachelor. The mayor is the only one who can enforce the law. The mayor's comment in the Advocate on March 7th was to move forward to change the law on the sand bachelor. We believe that the citizens of Harahan work very hard and deserve to enjoy clean homes, clean cars, and enjoy outdoor activity. A resident on Riverside Drive said, "I moved here three years ago and saw a pretty levee. I never knew what was behind it. I had to keep cleaning my white fascia, so I had to paint it tan." Residents are upset about not being able to keep their cars clean. Some won't take Riverside Drive after they wash their cars. Residents are very frustrated with chasing flies around their homes. We are very concerned about the health issues a resident spoke about in the last special council meeting. Residents should not have their property values lowered, changed driving routes, or paint their fascia boards tan. The residents have had enough of the sand, vibration, flies, odors, and noise. We believe, over a period of time, business on the sand bachelor has increased, and the residents are suffering more.
Thank you. My name is Evelyn Reed, Lieutenant Lieutenant. The residents and people using the levee for exercise enjoyment are being exposed to limestone dust, sand particles, manure smells, and wood fibers from composting and tree dumping. The residents' request are trucks entering across the ramp need to go straight to the back to the Mississippi River side of the sand pits. All access to sand pits need to be on the Mississippi River side. All openings from Hickory to Bailey of sand entering the community need to be closed with burns and tall evergreen trees. Unless all openings from Hickory to Bailey are closed, sand will continue to blow into the community. Grass planted on a sand road. Sand road will no longer be of use when all openings are closed. Steel grates installed on all bachelor side ramps for dump trucks to roll over before entering the community. Dump trucks should use only Evans Road or Powellon Drive, which are cement roads, to enter and exit Riverside Drive. Mulching and compost company must be removed. Limestone must be removed. Tree dumping must stop. Airport project starting second week of April will bring more sand, noise, vibrations, and lights to residents. Fifty-five trucks per hour from four different locations running at night. Dump trucks will cause noise and beeping sounds from trucks. Dump trucks will run approximately 10 months. Dump trucks will run from 7:00 PM to 6:00 AM. Dump trucks will also run regular hours of 6:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Some dump trucks will not obey the law during the day or are more likely not to obey the law at night. Sleep will be disturbed. Our homes and cars will be affected. Most sand companies are not located close to a large community. How can the airport project operate at night against a noise and nuisance law? The airport project will add to the existing problems residents have. My husband and I have felt like giving up many times over nine months. The only reason we have not given up is because we have prayed daily and talked to God about the problem affecting residents. We believe because of the relationship we have with Jesus Christ as our Lord and Savior, that God has given us a lot of strength and wisdom. We know in our hearts this is a job God called us to do. We believe with the help of our Lord Jesus Christ, we will get the help we need. We ask everyone to pray and ask God for wisdom and favor. We believe God will grant us a miracle soon. Ephesians 4:20 and 21 says, "Now unto Him who is able to do exceedingly, abundantly, above all that we ask for things, according to the power that works in us, unto Him be glory in the church, by Christ Jesus throughout all ages, world without end." Amen.
Good evening, council, mayor, citizens of Harahan. Dollyn Schwartz with Harahan Police Department. I'm here tonight to kind of give you an update on some special events that we have going on that I hope the citizens, the council, and mayor will choose to participate in. On Saturday, April 30th, we have our National Prescription Drug Takeback Day coming up again with the U.S. Department of Justice Drug Enforcement Administration. Once again, this gives everyone the opportunity to properly dispose of any prescription or over-the-counter drugs that they no longer need or require. Please, 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 take advantage of this. No questions asked. It provides a wonderful opportunity to properly destroy and not mess up our environment with... Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Councilman Johnson wanted to know if we're going to do it at Rite Aid Pharmacy parking lot again, and he is correct in that. And we'll also have another assembly set up at the police department in the lobby. No questions asked. Good question, Fred. Moving on, we have a special event coming up with the Special Olympics, the Law Enforcement Torch Run. Because it's the Law Enforcement Torch Run does not mean regular citizens cannot participate. The cost is $25 for registration. They have a really nice T-shirt that unfortunately I neglected to bring a picture of. I'll catch you at the next council meeting. It's navy blue in color. It has the sponsors on the back along with the torch and the Special Olympics symbol on the front. You can either choose to run with the law. The run is approximately three miles. Last year, we started it at Laffanear Park, and it ended at the Kenner Police Department. There's drinks, foods, entertainment, raffles. It's really a fun, great event. Every penny goes to the Louisiana Special Olympics, and these kids are phenomenal, and adults. Please consider, if you can't run like me, participating, $25, get you a nice T-shirt, and get you access to the event over at the Kenner Police Department. We really appreciate seeing you guys there. The Torch Run is on Thursday, May 19th, and will assemble probably at Laffanear Park is what I'm thinking they're going to do again this year at 0800 hours. The run will begin. We usually meet at Kenner Police Department. The runners are bussed over to the starting location, and from there, we proceed back to Kenner. Sunday, June 12th, we're going to have the Soul Bowl, which is another Special Olympics event. Oh, I'm up? Oh, my God. Okay. Well, I'll catch you guys there. Sunday, June 12th, Special Olympics Soul Bowl at the bowling alley. Fun, fun, fun. We'll talk about it next time. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
I've got a few questions I don't expect to be answered tonight. Storm season is upon us. I was wondering if we had any type of preparations in place for the storm season, especially the sewer plant will lose power. Understanding we've got some generators out back, I was wondering if they would run the pumps, the sewer pumps? Which ones they'll run, which ones they won't? And if they won't, why not? And what are we doing to prepare for storm season? Thank you. I can address everybody.
If you don't mind, I'll have J.R. Parrish enter seat and just answer that question directly.
Since I come every month and wait for somebody to ask a question like that, now I'm all excited. Yes, we actually have a hurricane binder that is updated every January to February. It is in the office with page, and it documents all our policies and procedures, phone numbers, intergy account numbers, addresses of the stations, everything. We also have a list of all 14 stations, their amperage, under full-load amps and startup amps. We know which generators will run which stations. The city fleet manages the generators per se, so I can't tell you, but I'm assuming all of them are in working order. Yes, they all will run all the stations needed. Do we have enough generators for all the stations? No, but most of the small stations that just service in streets don't need to be pumped down continuously, obviously, during an event. So, yes, we are prepared.
Will it run 9th Street?
Station 8?
Yes.
Yes, we have one generator that will run.
I'm trying to ask people not to ask questions while seated. Thank you. Sorry.
Yeah, we've run.
I'm Paul Letzering. I live at number 4 Chris Law Avenue in Harahan. I'm here to address the concern I have about the situation in my neighborhood. I want to thank the mayor and the council, first of all, for just taking our considerations into account, and we really appreciate your concerns for us. My biggest concern in my house, in my area, is the road. The road runs parallel to the levee, parallel to the river road, and right parallel to my house. My house rolls, vibrates when the trucks use this road. My husband, years ago, before he passed, investigated the use of taking this road, and it's only about four blocks, and taking it and bringing it to the river, there's already an existing road that goes to the river. If they could just discontinue the use of this road, and I know the activity on this road is only going to increase with the airport project. I'm worried about it being detrimental to my home, to my property, and I also am concerned about the times and all that they will be running. And anything you all can do, I know there's new ordinance and amendments that are coming into effect. I hope you all will consider our situation on the river. Thank you so, so much.
My name is Maria Petro, and I live at 26 Chris Law. I'm addressing the same issue. I know ordinance 1333, I've read it, research is very vague, and what it says is approved, you know, use behind the levee. Just in reading this, I see the hours that was added. That's good. But from my understanding, the council, you guys are the ones that could change what it says, and I think it needs to definitely address the traffic. Like Ms. Paul Letz says, I live right by Ms. Paul Letz, the traffic, the noise, and the sand. What can y'all do, please, you know, to do something about the sand? Make this ordinance mean something, not just as vague as it is, because it's not doing anything right now to our houses, our cars, our livelihood. And it's really a nuisance, and I know people say, oh, you know, why do you live there? I've lived there for 50 years. It's never been this bad. My family's lived in the same house for 75 years. It's never been this bad as it has been in the past year or so. I've lost track. That's it. Thank you.
My name is Majene Kessney, 46 Old Avenue, Harahan, Louisiana. Since we elected Mayor Misselli in 2015, we had a complete audit of the city finances by the state auditor. We, the citizens of Harahan, were quite surprised to learn that the city was over $2 million in debt, especially since Mayor Johnston had left $1 million surplus. The former mayor and council did not pass a budget for 2015, leaving it for the new mayor and a council to do. But it took this council till June of 2015 to pass a budget. We are now into March, and the 2016 budget has still not been passed. We have been through three auditors, and Ms. Lulu was told that the council would go through the budget line by line, and she had an answer to every question. The mayor and auditor have spent countless hours working with all departments to develop this budget to everyone's satisfaction. Do the departments want more money? Sure, but there are only so much to go around. On March 10th, Ms. Lulu went through the budget line by line and answered all your questions, yet this council questioned whether it should be put up for a first reading or not. Finally, after Mr. Bures said it was okay to do that in much useless debate, it was put up for the first reading, and since this is not a special meeting, I'm hoping this council will vote to adopt the mayor's budget as is, especially after listening to a budget message at the special meeting. Maybe the citizens didn't understand the message. Mayor Misselli has managed to reduce the deficit by approximately $800,000, with only $453,000 of that as BP money. But Ms. Wheeler insisted at the last meeting that the council can change this and take the BP money and spend it as they want, as they see fit. I understood Ms. Lulu to say any surplus money had to be used to pay down the deficit before anything else. How can this council justify changing anything in the mayor's budget when she has done such an excellent job of running the city and saving money during the past year? Now, on to another matter. The city is losing another wonderful profession.
That's the time, ma'am. I'll sit right. Go ahead. Thank you.
It is my understanding, and I've seen a letter that was going around, trying to hold the mayor accountable for the old Burger King. This Burger King has been empty and vacant for years, previous administrations, and if anybody needs to be held accountable, we have two on the council right now that's left over from previous council. They should have been held liable and accountable. Another thing, last week, one of the council people said she did not believe that this gentleman wrote the letter. A lot of y'all need to check your behavior because it is disrespectful. And Tim Bodie, you call the people, basically the ones that support the mayor, pawns and terrorists? Are you calling me one?
I didn't say that. Two bits said that, by the way. Just out of curiosity.
We will now close, address the council.
Reading of the minutes of the council meeting on January twenty-first.
Do I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes? I have a motion by Councilman Bodier, seconded by Councilman Johnson. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? We have five yeas, zero nays. Motion passes.
Approval of the minutes of the council meeting on January twenty-first.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? I have a motion by Councilman Bodier, seconded by Councilman Johnson. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? We have five yeas, zero nays. Motion passes.
Reading of the minutes of the council meeting on February eighteenth.
Do I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes?
Yes.
I have a motion by Councilman Bodier, seconded by Councilman Johnson. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? We have five yeas, zero nays. Motion passes.
Approval of the minutes of the council meeting on February eighteenth.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Yes.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Wheeler. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? We have five yeas, zero nays. Motion passes.
Communications, the Board of Adjustments and Appeals did not meet in February, and there was no quorum at the March Planning and Zoning Board meeting. The case will be carried over to April. An ordinance is for approval?
There are no resolutions.
Oh, there were, I apologize, no resolutions, and ordinances for approval. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Benton, and seconded by Councilman, I would like to second this one for conveniences.
Do we have a second?
We have a second for conveniences.
An ordinance to address conveniences, which has been a problem with the city and brought to issue by more than just Councilman Benton, is not going to be seconded.
Mayor, if I can say, I think there was an issue, I think Councilman Johnson had said to Mr. Bures.
There was an issue. I talked to Mr. Bures. Mr. Bures says it's okay, but I don't think it is, and I don't want to put my name on the, on the situation.
The issue is, is that originally we were given the ordinance for approval.
Well, Mr. Bures, can I just ask a question? If we simply second it, and when we discuss it, we can discuss this issue, correct? It would still be open, and then we could either...
This, this is out of order.
Correct. Correct, and then you can discuss it.
I'll address that, my report is fine.
So, the ordinance, just like the ordinance for introduction for the bachelor to help tighten up the restrictions on the bachelor and help the citizens, died for lack of a second to put it on to the meeting, this ordinance dies for lack of a second to help the financial picture of the city, so it won't be voted on.
Ordinance is for introduction. The following ordinance was proposed by Councilman Bodier. An ordinance to amend and reordain section six dash seventy-three D of chapter six of the Harrahann Municipal Code, ordinance sixteen sixty-nine, relative to location restrictions of alcoholic beverage outlets, to restrict, to restrict same to locations one hundred feet or more distance of a building occupied exclusively as a church, or synagogue, or public library, or public playground, or school, except for business education conducted as a business college or school, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. There's no old business. New business, number one, police escort and barricades are needed for the Saint Rita Annual Liberacy and May Crowning Procession, Sunday, May first, following eleven thirty mass.
Do we need a motion to approve? I have a motion to approve by Councilman Bodier, seconded by Councilman Johnson. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? We have five yeas, zero nays. Escort is approved.
New business, number two, City Hall Security.
I actually asked that that be placed on the agenda, and I'm going to go ahead and strike it, and we'll talk about it in the future.
Address the council.
Anyone who would like to come up and address the council can come up and address the council. You have three minutes to come.
Majene Kessney, forty-six Old Avenue, Harrahann. To finish my comments, on the other matter, the city is losing another wonderful professional in Kevin Johnson, our regulatory department director. Even with a master's degree and thirty years of government experience, this council questioned his method of dealing with wood material. A man of his caliber will be hard to replace, especially if they heard the letter Ms. Hewitt read from Mr. Johnson explaining why he left. And if this council wants to find out, they can read it on the website. And maybe the council should finally accept that Harrahann has come into the twenty-first century and closing business. The way we used to do it doesn't work anymore. Thank you.
Evelyn Reed, three run pass. I would first like to say that I appreciate that the council members let us know about the ordinance. It's like so great, it's six months. I would like to also say that I think what they just said was absolutely correct. I believe after the first time we addressed it, it shouldn't have been up to us to have to come back again. It shouldn't have been. We brought it to the attention, we had a very good speech about it, and because we weren't there, it should have kept going. So, I think what they said was made absolutely perfect sense. So, I don't understand why everybody's making such a big deal about the council members saying the readings didn't have to be there for a second meeting to occur. That's between Kevin Johnson and wood materials. Just is. So, I don't know what the big deal is about this feeling like they attacked somebody, because they didn't. And I'm very frustrated about it. I feel like it's not right to do that to them. I'm not trying to take up for them, but it makes perfect sense to me. I'm glad that they said that wasn't our responsibility, and it's not. We feel like we got a lot of responsibilities, but thank God that wasn't. I'm very sorry to hear Mr. Johnson resigned. Mr. Johnson is a very nice man. We met him at our church, and I've called and asked him to, please call me, and he hasn't, and I'm very disappointed with that. So, I hope that someone would please encourage Mr. Johnson to please call me. I've communicated with him, and I would like to communicate with him again, because I think we lost a very good code enforcement guy in a very important time right now. So, I thank you all guys for making a very good point. I think you did a good job with it, and I don't think you should feel wrong in any kind of way. And I would be sure to tell you if I felt that way. You know me. So, and I think that if somebody can talk to Mr. Johnson, would you please encourage him to call me? I would really enjoy speaking to him. Thank you very much.
I'm John Reed, three run pass. I don't understand why this ordinance thirteen thirty-three, appendix A, is so hard to understand, that obnoxious and offensive sand is blowing over the river, over the levee, onto people's houses. We keep saying it quantified, this man has gotten away with this for thirty years, and is making people's lives miserable. He, he finally wound up trying to get a mulching compost industry back there. He's clearly going against the law. He's trying to override Harrahann, the city of Harrahann, and he's got a lot more money than we have. So, what do we do about that? We have laws on the books. He shouldn't even be back there treating Harrahann the way he is. So, somebody needs to wake up, and we need to enforce the laws that we have on the books. And it's been done several times before with Wood Marines and Wood Resources. He's always trying to do something to get over on Harrahann. So, he's ruining the, the property values in the homes along Riverside Drive, and no telling how far that sand goes and whatever effects they have on the community. Another thing I wanted to say was that Kevin Johnson is a good code enforcement man. He didn't, some of the things he wasn't familiar with, but he should have enforced the law. He should have gone in sight of wood. He should have noticed what was going on with the sand that was coming over the river, coming over the levee, and affected people's homes. He should have known that stuff. And I like Kevin Johnson, and I think, I don't think he should have resigned. I think he should have hung in there and fought a good fight. So, I think something needs to be done. I'm calling on the, the city council and the mayor to do something about this and, and alleviate the problems that we're having with, with the citizens having with the sand. Thank you very much.
We will now close, address the council.
Secretary's report for February, total revenue five hundred seventy-two thousand, one hundred eighty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents. Reports.
Statistics for the Harrahann Police Department for the month of February two thousand and sixteen, we handled five hundred and thirty-four calls for service. We handled thirteen accidents, we issued sixty-one citations for ninety-seven different charges. We handled seven patrol requests. We had eighty-five arrests for one hundred and forty-two different charges, twenty-nine with traffic, seven felony, seventy-seven misdemeanors, and twenty-nine city arrests. Person to property crimes, we had six larceny thefts and eight assaults. Again, I encourage people to lock your cars, lock your homes. If you see something suspicious, please call the dot and nine-one-one, or call the Harrahann Police Department. Thank you.
Chief, can I ask a quick question? Or actually, request an update on, on Red Flex, the assessment time?
They were doing it today. I don't know if they finished today. They called me yesterday, and apparently it started last night. So, when they complete that, then they'll get back with you.
Where are the assessment locations? Do you have that, if you can tell?
Not, not at all. It's major fire affairs in the city with their problems.
But do you have that in email?
Pardon?
You have that in email from Mr. Charlie Buckley?
The day I met with him, after we met, I showed him on the map some of our locations and roads, and pointed them out. I don't have it with me, but I have it.
Okay, well, maybe we can talk tomorrow, and you can just let me know where they are. I was just curious.
That's fine.
Okay, and so let us know if it actually happened today.
I think they, apparently it started last night. I don't know if they finished today or not. I don't know how long it's been. But it started, the assessment, it started, because of the weather last week, they canceled.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sincere, Fire Chief of the City of Harrahann. Good evening, citizens, council mayor. Our report for February two thousand and sixteen, we had one vehicle accident with injury, three fire alarms, three structural fires, six medical assistance calls, two investigations, and one rescue, which was a person stuck in an elevator, and we successfully removed them.
We have an elevator.
We do have an elevator. I'm not going to, I'm not going to tell you all where it is, because I don't want y'all using it, because people do get stuck in it quite often. But it would increase our call volume, which may justify more money, but anyway. I'd like to also report that we are happy to be the recipients of more smoke alarms. So, we have a hundred and fifty more smoke alarms, so please start calling us again at seven three seven nine nine five seven. We'd be happy to come out and install them for you, and tell you where we think you may need them, and assist you with that. We'd like to go through this allotment so that we can try to get another allotment. So, please come on out. I think to date, we have a hundred and fifty alarms out at about fifty locations, give a dig. Also like to report that we had started receiving some of the equipment that we ordered from the money that we'd received from the parish. We're very excited to, hopefully in the near future, implement some of the things that we had hoped to, and that we've been striving to get to for a few years now. It's exciting that we're going to get Firehouse software out and going, that's going to help us do our, our daily job. So, I just want to report that we're moving forward on that, and that's about it. Thank you.
Councilman Bodier?
I'll report.
Councilman Hewitt? Councilman Johnson?
Sure, I just have a few things. I know we're going to get attacked because we didn't do certain things. I just wanted to go over why I didn't do it. As far as amending the agenda to put this ordinance, the thirteen thirty-three up, we just received that we didn't get informed of it beforehand. We weren't told it was going to come up. When something comes up and we, well, I know I do it, when something comes up that I haven't presented beforehand, I go to each councilman, I call them up, I say, I'm going to be putting this up. If you can pass it through, that would be great. And we never got that courtesy, and I didn't want to put my name on it because of that. As far as the ordinance for approval with the convenience fees, I had no problem with the convenience fee ordinance. The problem I had, which I've had talked to the city attorney, in the original ordinance, it has in the title, check services, which is talking about all the services it has. In the updated ordinance we got today, the check services is taken out of the title. I've talked to a few people, along with the city attorney. The city attorney thinks it's okay. I've talked to a few people that said, you can't change anything that's in the title that was already advertised. That's why I didn't want to go forward with it. If, if they put it back up, or whoever wants to put it back up, I have no problem with the ordinance itself. It's the title, right? Lastly, I want to speak about is they've been having an email circulating Harrahann from the State Harrahann Group. In it, it talks about with the budget discussion, where the mayor is running down a deficit, which is great. It has me in here saying that, I said plenty of times that the mayor's gloating. While it did say that she was gloating, it's taken way out of context from what I was saying. I was saying that she was gloating that we have surpluses, but yet the fire department and the police department are not properly funded. That is the reasoning why I said she was gloating, because it's ridiculous when you don't have your departments funded properly. And other than that, I think that's going to do it.
Councilman Wheeler?
I agree with Councilman Johnson about the introduction. I actually spoke to Sue and addressed the issue about the check service in the ordinance. I did want it to come across that if a citizen comes into the city of Harrahann and pays a fine, or taxes, or a permit with a check, there would be a fee assessed on it. It looked a little confusing that it could be construed that way. So, I did reach out to Councilman Benton. It just suggested that I felt that the check services section in the ordinance be removed so it wouldn't confuse the citizens. However, since it was brought up for introduction, I saw that Councilman Johnson had reached out to Attorney Bures, and I don't, I don't recall there being a response, and we thought we don't have any problem with the ordinance, Sue, we're all with it. But I do agree that I think it needs to come up for first reading and then be brought up for public hearing. That was my only concern. I just didn't want it to be confusing, that nobody would understand that they came in and paid with a check, there would be a fee assessed.
Mr. Bures, do you mind making comment, please?
Many of the problems that you guys are running into comes from the fact that you have this incomprehensible way of dealing with ordinances. As I suggested when I came to the city attorney, the clerk should take these ordinance that's going to be introduced, numbered sequentially by year, twenty sixteen, X, what is it? And then that is the ordinance that you will be considering from then on out. Apparently what you're doing is like you introduce an ordinance, and then if you want to change it before it's actually voted on, after the first reading, you stick in another ordinance, something called ordinance number with a blank. That's not what the process is supposed to do. The process is supposed to be, you introduce the ordinance on first reading, the title, and I just want to make this very clear, the title of any piece of legislation gives a general idea to the public what the subject matter of the legislation is. It doesn't have to track the language exactly. It just has to give a general idea. And once that ordinance is introduced, that proposed ordinance, twenty sixteen dash X, every subsequent meeting will consider that document. All changes, all amendments will be made to that document. So, for example, I, I don't recall whether the original submission had check services in it, but no, I'm not even sure if check services is on, and I don't know if it's supposed to be put there. It doesn't matter. That check services isn't the subject of the legislation. Convenience fees are. So, when you bring it up for adoption, you know, in this final passage, you can make changes to it, you can make amendments... changes to it, you can make amendments to it, and you don't destroy the efficacy of the title because you pulled check services out of the body of the document. So I'm gonna get with Nicole and from now on, we're gonna make sure that all ordinances that are introduced, number one, have a sequential number, are on a calendar so we know which ones are up on first reading and after the final passage at subsequent meetings. We're gonna draft them all so they have line numbers. We're gonna draft them so they actually have titles and ordinance to establish, not an ordinance, an ordinance to establish convenience fees. The title just gives an idea of what it is that you're gonna be talking about. So those are, I think, the problems that happen with this convenience fee thing. Now look, on the substance of the ordinance, I think it needs to be redrafted for substance because generally what you do on a convenience fee is you either, the council either opposes the fee, so you can look in the municipal code and say, oh, I owed this for doing this, or they delegate it to an administrator and say, you know, you can, you can impose convenience fees consistent with reasonable charges to defray the cost of providing the service, or, you know, the administrator can come up with a fee, you know, keep coming back to the council. But this thing really doesn't, it doesn't really do anything. It says, may provide credit card and online payment services for the payment, then he said, well, that doesn't impose anything. It says, convenience fee for these services shall be paid by the party making the payment. Yeah, but it doesn't impose it. So that section of it needs to be redrafted. I was told by Nicole, it came, this came from Mandeville. We'll, they'll have to straighten that out. So that's my story on, on the convenience fee. It's something we should work, I don't, I, I'm gonna find out what was on first reading.
It's, uh, the original.
The original.
The original.
We gotta get, we gotta start getting those numbers on this proposed ordinance so that we know where we're tracking it.
Thank you very much. Councilman Benton?
Um, I'd just like to point out a couple of things. I've been sitting, uh, here for fifteen months now and I have not gotten one second on anything that I have put up. Um, tonight I put something up that, uh, was about an issue that is very important to all of us that this council has expressed a lot of concern about. They did, um, Mr. Johnson is wrong. You did receive the, um, the ordinance from the city attorney, uh, several weeks ago and, um, no one, to my knowledge, uh, contacted Mr. Bures about it. I've been emailing with him trying to, um, further tighten up the thirteen thirty-three and he, his suggestion was, let's put it on, um, as it was sent out three weeks ago so that they wouldn't have anything to balk at and we will tighten it up further, um, later in amendment. So, um, for Mr. Johnson to say that he didn't get it and he didn't know anything about it is incorrect. Um, and as far as the fees, the, uh, ordinance about the fees, I just wanna point out that once again, a councilman knows more than the professional and, um, or is relying on other people. Um, and, you know, why do we have Mr. Bures if we're gonna just ignore everything he says? Um, and I, you know, I think we should have passed that, uh, put that ordinance up for first reading tonight about the bachelor because the bachelor is an important issue. And, um, I just wanted, wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, that maybe hasn't been to every meeting, that these four other councilmen will not second one thing that I put up. Oh, and I also wanna say that, um, the council meetings are now on the website and it's very user-friendly and very easy to, um, access, so I invite you to, uh, look at that website. Thank you.
I'd like to address, uh, the ordinance that, um, Sue was introducing tonight. Each branch of government has responsibilities. The executive, the legislative, and the judicial. Legislative branch needs to act. The executive branch has acted in the bachelor issue as it sees through, with the assistance of Ms. Bures and with Kevin Johnson with their input. The judicial branch is now in, taking up this action as well. It is now time for the legislative branch to act. I've been asking for months to give me something that is enforceable for our citizens. The first thing that we did was talk to Mr. Bures about how do we make this ordinance better. We asked him to make the ordinance better. That ordinance was sent to everyone and Ms. Benton and I have been communicating with Mr. Bures on how to construct it, can we do this, can we do that, et cetera. It should go with, should not go unnoticed that there's an ordinance for introduction by Councilman Bodie. It is amending another ordinance that has to deal with zoning and distance from, uh, or providing liquor licenses and the distance, shortening the distance. Because he understands in that instance that what is written in an ordinance has to be changed and amended because there are rules and regulations to follow. Things like hundred feet as opposed to three hundred feet give the administration the ability to enforce things. In our NU bachelor section of ordinance thirteen thirty-three, it lacks certain defined parameters. We are seeking through the ordinance that Ms. Benton tried to introduce on behalf of the citizens for our welfare, your welfare, to start defining what the parameters are so that the ordinance becomes enforceable. Now I'll address about the budget. I take it, um, gloating was not my reaction about the deficit being reduced. I was relieved and I was proud of all the hard work that a lot of good people did perform in order to get the deficit down. So gloating, I was not. I would think anyone on this council would be feeling relieved as well because it unburdens our citizens of that deficit, which prevents us from being financially healthy, refinance funds, start putting money toward our police and fire that we truly have. The other thing about the budget I want everyone to notice is will be going up on the website. The funding in all departments are relatively stable. There have been some increases. We've worked with Chief Walker to increase things that he asked for with pay for an extra four hours to cover twelve-hour shifts, overtime pay and not do comp time. We've worked with Chief Saint Seer to convert overtime into actually having two additional Go see for yourself if we underfunded. Look at the numbers. They're there for everyone to see. If we don't get our deficit under control, Harahan will not be able to grow financially. We have to be able to look at all the systems that, and all the, uh, things that we provide to our residents. Our first responders, we hold precious. We have to fund them and fund them well. But with the deficit, it hurts our first responders. We have people who are suffering because of a collapsing sewer system. It too must be funded well. That sewer system, if it does not work adequately, if there is backup and say there's a patient, there's a person that's on some chemo drug, they're immunocompromised, meaning they have a higher risk for infection. They can have a problem. They're more susceptible. Being able to flush your toilet during a rain is something we expect that we have to fund also. We have to fund our professionals. We have to fund our maintenance department. We have to fund streets, highways. We have a senior center that is not on a millage, we do not collect money from Jefferson Parish. Our poor city funds our senior center. And I'm proud to say that our senior center is the most well-attended in Jefferson Parish also. So we have to divide up the pie and we look to guidelines. There are certain parameters that are, people use that officials and accountants, CPAs use in order to know how much of every pie distributed out to what sections. The, what I also would like this council and our city to know is that this council voted on a budget on December thirtieth that I subsequently vetoed because of the way certain monies were moved out of just the administrative part and because it became, it looked like more revenue that we really didn't have. That budget was passed though. It was brought passed by this council for the fire department and the police department and all other departments. And at no time were there questions about the mayor underfunding our first responders. If that, we are in a predicament. We have to generate revenue. We cannot fund police officers, firemen, people in administration, people in maintenance with one-time revenues. It has to be a repeating revenue, sales tax, permits, et cetera. It's very serious, but I'm encouraged. We are so close to coming, climbing out of that pit. We are now projecting, our newest numbers are now projecting that we will have that deficit at ninety percent eradicated by the end of this year. That's amazing. That puts us on a healthy footing. We cannot continue to operate without a budget. In doing so, we raise the cost of our professionals. Every time the budget gets delayed, new numbers need to be put in, more meetings are held, more long nights, those things cost. But not only does it cost for those professional services, it takes away from the day-to-day operations and the services that our citizens need us to provide other than building a budget. So I ask that our residents, please look at the budget that we are gonna have online. It's up for vote on the thirty-first. It's an excellent budget in light of the situation that was inherited. I am hopeful that in two thousand seventeen, we start treating all our employees, our first responders and the rest of our employees respectfully and build in a cost of living raise and eventually build in some kind of retirement for, for non-first responders who work for the city. So on that note, I'd like to thank you for your attention, uh, while I give that report, so, um...
Mayor?
Yes?
Comment on budget relief? Something happened? Last Sunday night, we received calls around ten forty-five P.M., something like gunshots that enabled a colonial country club by the river. Uh, we had units out there home with these types of levy district. Actually, when the officers were out there, they heard the shots. They appeared to be coming from across the river. The strange part about it, from the social media that I've read and also from complaints that came into the police department that night, people said it sounded like somebody was knocking on your door, which doesn't really correlate to a gunshot. So I, I have no explanation for it, but I can assure you there was no gunshot Sunday night in Harahan. So numerous people said they called the station, like somebody knocking on your door and it was the same time that the gunshots up on the levee were heard, but it appears they were from the West Bank. Talked to the sheriff's office Monday, they have no, no knowledge of where it occurred. So we, we were safe. We just wanted...
Any truth of the, them shooting a movie door across the river? I mean, I've heard that, have you heard anything?
No, I checked Monday with the sheriff's office and they, nothing that they can, that they know of that could have been, uh, in connection with this. But actually when officers were on that levee, they actually recorded some of the shots. It was several times in succession, so, but it wasn't in Harahan, so we're safe.
Thank you.
Mayor, before we get to pay bills...
Oh, we have to pay bills.
Before we get to pay bills, Happy Italian, do you motion to add Happy Italian to the agenda?
Uh...
Happy Italian ABO.
Oh, okay.
We have the...
Oh, okay.
Oh, now with the paper one, I think. Um, you have, did she, I spoke to the chief earlier today, Happy, Happy Italian? Or was that yesterday?
There is, um, they have a letter here.
Happy Italian. I thought Happy Italian was gonna, um, be...
I believe it's gonna be in conjunction with the ordinance that was, Councilman Bodie has ordered for it. I submitted the paperwork, remember last year when this came up? The COG force director myself had the problem about being within three hundred feet. So when Mr. Bures came on, I submitted the packet that I had along with the letters that you all received today from between the COG force director and myself saying that he was within violation because he was within the three hundred feet. Uh, Mr. Bures apparently spoke to Councilman Bodie and that's the ordinance that's being introduced. As far as the asking the background check, that's okay, but the other problem is the three hundred feet that needs to be resolved. So it wasn't, it wasn't my knowledge to be introduced tonight for approval. It was gonna be in conjunction with the ordinance that was introduced tonight that, that will go for, uh, passage next month. I'm sorry for the misunderstanding on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, that's fine. I apologize to Mr. Lenny for coming out here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
We have to, uh, pay bills. Uh, bills paid in February, two hundred seventy thousand, fifty-three dollars, twelve cents. No executive session and adjourn.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Bodie, all in favor. Any opposed? We have five days, zero days. And this is the shortest council meet, regular city council meeting. I'm sensing a game of the heat.